Check one, two. One, two. Testing, one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two. Testing, one, two. Anything?
Yeah, I can hear it, but it's low.
It's low. Okay. How about now? Test one, two, three. One, two, three, four. Higher? That's higher?
Yeah.
But still, still not enough?
Test, test.
I'll go to full gain.
No, put it back down, I'm getting too much static.
Too much static? Okay. Ladies, can you hear me?
Oh, no.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District May 11th Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Juan Gabriel Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for the members of the public. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: Llame al cuatro, cero, dos, cinco, cuatro, cinco, cero, uno, cinco, dos. Cuando se le pida presione el pin o la clave nueve, seis, cuatro, cero, uno, uno, cinco, uno, nueve y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment sessions or they may choose to submit their public comments online by 12:00 PM today. Comments submitted online will be read during the appropriate agendized public comment session. Let's begin with board row call. Right to my right, I have Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Good evening.
And then I have Board Member Dr. Paulo Macallas.
Good evening, everyone.
And then Board Member Ryan A. Ruelis.
Hello.
Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
And I am Juan Alvarez. Alright, next, item one B, public speakers for closed session on agenda items. At this moment, there are no public speakers for closed session items tonight. Let's go to item two, adjournment to closed session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of moving to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Alright, let's go to closed session.
Test one two, test one two. Test one two, check one, two, three, four, five. One, two, test one, two, test one, two. We'll try it out here. Check, are we getting any feedback? Testing one, two, testing one, two. Okay, sounds pretty good. Hello, hello, hello? Okay, so if they want to use this, he can come out and not behind there. I'm just going to verify that it's going through. Can you...
Test, one, two, three, four. Test, one, two. Test, test, test. Pop, pop, pop. Picycle. Ice, ice, icicle? Did Ben ever hear my test, test, testing, one, two?
So go ahead and turn the battery off and leave it at your station. Let him know as they come in.
Hello, good evening everyone. Hello, just a quick interpreting announcement. If anybody needs interpreting, we have devices in the back for you.
Buenas tardes a todos, solamente un breve anuncio de interpretación. Si alguien necesita interpretación, tenemos aparatitos aquí atrás. Gracias. Gracias.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District May 11th School Board Meeting. I'm AESD Board President Juan Alvarez, and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: llame al 402-545-0152. Cuando se le pida, presione el pino o la clave: y la tecla numeral. Let's go to item 3A. Let's begin with the flag suit. We have Dr. Downing.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our elected leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Moving on to introductions and roll call. To my left, we have board member Mark A. López.
Good evening.
And then we have Dr. Paulo Macalles.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everybody tonight.
We have trustee Ryan Ruelis.
Hello.
Board clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to see so many back in our boardroom.
Hi, I'm Juan Alvarez. And then to my left, we have Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening.
We have Dina Mellon, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
We have Jesse Chaviria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
And to my right, we have Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
We have Yasenia Uréñez, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening, everybody.
And to the back of the room, we have our interpreters, Alina Abellaroque and Yasmin Anaya. And in the room to my left, in the front, we have Janice Cato, our Technology Support Technician. And the back of the room, in our... I guess you could... what do you call that? Our tech room in the back? We have Brian Brooks, our Media Service Supervisor, and Benjamin Hausman, our Media Production Specialist. Okay, moving on to item 3C, Report of Closed Session Action... Actions Taken. In closed session, the Board of Education took the following action. The Board adopted the Superintendent's 2022 Performance Evaluation. There was a motion and a second, and we voted 5-0 to approve the performance evaluation. Those are the only actions taken during closed session. All right, moving on to 3D, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All right, any discussion? I actually would like to move that if you would agree or entertain my motion, to move item 5A to before Special Order of Business just to give our parent from the DAC DILAC time to speak and not have to wait through the rest of the presentations. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, who in favor of moving item 5A before Special Order of Business? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. So let's move on to the News and Update 5A from our Parent Leadership Group. DAC DILAC, I believe we have Rosa Barrios here? Oh, she was going to come later. I anticipated it to be later. Okay, well, trying to help her out. Okay, no problem. We'll just move on with the natural order then. Thank you, everybody. I just was trying to help her out. All right, so let's move on to Special Order of Business. Item A, Recognition of the 2021-22 AESD Certificated Employees of the Year. We have Dr. Christopher Downing and Tamula Desma, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dina Mellon, and I'm from Human Resources, and I'd like to thank all of you for coming today to help us recognize all of our Employees of the Year. We will be starting with the certificated group, and then we'll move right into recognizing our classified group. When you hear your name called, please come up to the podium to receive your certificate and PIN. The board members will also join us in the front so that they can welcome you as well. We ask that you remain up front until all names have been called. At that time, we will take a group picture, and then you will all move right outside through that door so that you're able to take pictures with your friends and family in front of an AESD background on the wall just outside the door. Here to introduce our certificated Employees of the Year is Human Resources Director Tamula Desma.
Good evening. One of my favorite evenings of the year to be able to recognize such amazing people that make such a difference in the lives of our kiddos here in Anaheim. I wanted to start with a little poem. When someone asks why anyone would ever be a teacher, remind them why it is worth it. Every job does have its ups and downs, but not every job can change a life. All right. I will do my best to read slowly and give you time to make your way up here. First, I would like to recognize from the AEOA campus Susan Vu. Next, from Barton, Colin McCarthy. From Benjamin Franklin, Sharon Calderon. From Gower, Diana Torres. From Gwen, Sarah Cam. From Henry, Diana Tran. From Jefferson, Myra Toronas. From Juarez, Cynthia Magdaleno. From Lincoln, Tracy Williams. From La Uera, Sev Hang. From Madison, Sarah Skratulia. From Mann, Anna Sanchez. From Olive, Jennifer Glugash. Somebody, I heard somebody was going to come up and accept it for her. I'm like, okay. From Revere, Connie Bragoso. From Roosevelt, Angela Huang Shur. From Roosevelt, Angela Huang Shir. From, I don't know how we got out of alphabetical order. Throw Tamila Desma off when you're out of alphabetical order. And then, we have two that were selected to be our representatives for AESD to move on to the county level. So these people were so lucky, not only were they selected by their school site, then they were selected by a committee, and then they were blessed with doing yet another application. So, to recognize their hard work, not just in the classroom, but also putting together their packet to show us all the great things that they do for kids, we want to recognize And you get your workout for the night, because that thing is heavy. And then finally, from Price School, we have Socorro Sanchez Vargas. We have three people who were unable to be with here, be with us here tonight, but hopefully you'll clap loud enough that they'll hear it all the way where they are this evening. So Britt Marstad. Michelle Mescal. And then I have, real quick, a great teacher is confident, takes risks, is awesome, my favorite, and loves to teach. Now I want to break it down into some current kid language for you. My teacher is the boss. He or she is chill, a savage, bustin', and can slay. He or she is the CEO of teaching goals.
Two. Three. One more.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Dina Mellon from Human Resources, and we really do want to extend this and say thank you so, so much. It's really nice to have everybody here in the audience, and thanks for being here to help recognize our classified employees. Just wanted to do a little housekeeping. I know you guys were just outside, so you saw the big blue backdrops. We're gonna have those backdrops out there. As soon as we're done with the group picture, everybody can exit out there and take pictures with friends and family. And so what we're gonna do is, once you hear your name called, you'll come up to the podium to receive your certificate and a PIN, and to be able to be greeted by the board. And we ask that you do stay up here in the little circular area, because we'd like to take a group picture when we're done, and then you can exit out to do all the pictures you'd like to take. So again, congratulations, and I'd like to introduce Classified Human Resources Director, Eric Hallman.
Good evening, everybody. Classified school employees improve the lives of students every day, from teaching vital skills to ensuring that our schools and district operate smoothly. Classified staff make a difference in the daily lives of all Anaheim students and families. Their contributions to our schools are endless and make learning possible, which is why we are honored to introduce this year's Classified Employees of the Year. So I'm gonna be calling your name and your site, as well as your position in our school district. First, from the Anaheim Online Academy, School Office Coordinator Feliciano Calindo. From James Gwynn Elementary School, Library Media Assistant Tammy DePoto. From Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, School Safety Assistant, Rosio Miranda. From Benito Juarez Elementary School, School Safety Assistant, Angelica Mendez de Escutia. From Abraham Lincoln School, School Office Assistant, Guadalupe Gutierrez. From La Uera Elementary School, Instructional Assistant for Special Education, Kimberly Javier. From Paul Revere Elementary School, School Safety Assistant, Leslie Bravo Biesteros. From Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School, Lead Custodian, Richard Fernandez. From Betsy Ross Elementary School, School Office Assistant, Tanya Sanchez. From Sunkist Elementary School, Family and Community Engagement Specialist, Marla Sanchez. From our Human Resources Department, Human Resources Technician for Certificated Alexandra From our Special Services Department, Instructional Assistant for Behavior Intervention and Transition, Jasmine wasn't able to get her, but that's okay. We'll get that to her. And from our Purchasing, Print Shop, and Warehouse Department, our Lead Warehouse Assistant, And we also have a few employees who were moved on to the county level to represent Anaheim Elementary School District with the Orange County Department of Education. We'd like to recognize a few of them who were able to join us tonight. First of all, from Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, our School Safety Assistant, Amy Hopper. And from Alexander Stoddard Elementary School, our School Office Coordinator, Martha Lee. And from our Data Department, for Data Assessment Technician, Cesar Vargas. And we have some county nominees who weren't able to join us this evening, but just want to call out their names and see if they were able to. If not, we'll make sure we'll get their certificates to them right away. Gabriela Fuentes. From Westmont Elementary School. Martha Hernandez, from our Transportation Department. And Berta Soto, who is our, from our Preschool Department, Instructional Assistant. Right, and then just one more thing. We had a few classified employees who were not able to join us, as well as want to call out their names. Raquel Williams. Wendy Radward. Rosa Mungia. Rahazi Savala. Monica Lozano. Christopher Samarifa. Aricely Rodriguez. Anna San Solana. Yamilek Carpio. Richard Lapera. Jorge Flores. Itzel Diaz. Brenda Cruz. And Karina Areola.
Okay, that was a lot of excitement. Let's move on to our next presentation. We're going to recognize John Orr, member of the Citizens Oversight Committee, Dr. Christopher Downing.
Thank you, Board President.
Also, Isella Vasquez.
Isella Vasquez, as well as Jesse Chavera. Isella, why don't you come on up? So everyone, John Orr began his service to the district approximately six years ago on Measure BB and G, Citizens Oversight Committees. When Measure J was put on the ballot, he joined other volunteers to call voters in the district in support of the new bond. in support of the new bond, so schools like Sunkist and Roosevelt could be rebuilt and brought into the 21st century. Once Measure J passed, he joined the COC for Measure J and served as both Chair and Vice Chair. He has now termed out, but hopes that he may serve again in the future, and we hope the same. In his role as a member of the committee, his responsibilities included reviewing expenditures for bond projects to ensure that all proceeds were expended only for the purposes set forth in the voter-approved Measure G and J bonds. At the end of his term, John Orr held a community-at-large representative seat. However, he has also held a parent representative seat in previous years. John moved into the district 13 years ago with his wife Cindy and two daughters Jade and Catherine. Jade is now preparing for her senior year at Oxford Academy, and while Catherine is preparing to start her freshman year at Cotella High School. Both girls attended Roosevelt Elementary, just like their mother did many years ago. John may be relatively new to the district, but his wife is a proud AESD graduate. So I'd like to now have Isella Vasquez talk a little bit more about Mr. Orr.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Downey. Good evening, everyone. As mentioned by our superintendent, the Oversight Committee plays an important and crucial role in informing the public concerning the expenditures from the bond proceeds. In order to achieve its purpose, the committee must review multiple financial reports, thus requiring the committee members to dedicate significant time to review the reports during the committee meetings. To that end, we want to thank Mr. Orr for his significant contributions while serving as a member, a Vice Chair, and Chair of the Committee in support of our bond program. At this time, it is my pleasure to invite Mr. Orr to the podium to present him with his certificate of recognition. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. As he said, it was an honor to be able to serve. I believe very much in education. I've spent 20 years working for the Cal State system. Now I work at Mount San Antonio College. So it's great to be able to see the inner workings of education and how, how much effort and time the district has put forth to serve our children in this community. As he said, I've heard that it's possible maybe that after a year of being off the committee, I might be able to return. If that's true, I'd love to do it. I now have a hole in my schedule, so if there's anything else you all need. I live down the street. Isella has my contact info. But that's it. Thank you all very much.
Okay, moving on to our next presentation. We have OC GRIP Program. We have Shannon Back, Senior Deputy District Attorney, Jorge Cisneros, Anaheim Police Department Chief. Welcome. You may now come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you. If it's all right with the board, I'll present from here. Thank you so much for having us this evening and allowing us to present to you regarding the OC GRIP Program. For those of you not familiar with the OC GRIP Program, our goal is to assist students and encourage them to complete high school successfully, complete college, if that is their goal, successfully, and perhaps most importantly, stay out of the criminal justice system. Currently, OC GRIP is in 64 schools countywide, all the way as north as Buena Park to as south as San Clemente. We work with 11 different school districts throughout Orange County, and we have been in existence since 2007. So we feel really fortunate to be able to say this is our 15th year of a successful OC GRIP Program. OC GRIP schools in Anaheim, we have been OC GRIP with the DA's office in Anaheim since 2017. We're currently in six schools in the city of Anaheim, five schools in Anaheim Elementary School District. You can see on the presentation here how long we've been at each one of those schools. And we are very fortunate to have the support of our principals, some of whom are here today as well. With OC GRIP, we focus on, we call them the three A's, academics, attendance, and attitude. Those are the categories that we work with students towards improving and maintaining, because we feel that that, with the success in those categories, it gives them a really bright future. There are a number of different components to the OC GRIP Program, where we are working one-on-one with students. We are sometimes working with students in group educational situations. We provide education to faculty as well, and also to our parents. We have a number of wonderful parent volunteers at our Anaheim schools who volunteer their time to make their schools safer and to engage with the students. Students are selected by their schools, by their teachers, by their principals, and referred to us as students who maybe could use a little bit of extra help. We do get parent permission before we work with any of the students. We have them sign paperwork. Perhaps the most important word in our name, Orange County Gang Reduction and Intervention Partnership, is partnership. OC GRIP is all about partnership. It is all about relationships. It is completely important that we partner with not only the schools, the principals, the faculty, but the parents of the students, the school district, community partners, all of us working together to help students have the best futures that they possibly can. We provide a number of educational opportunities, as I mentioned, to parents. Sometimes they request certain topics that would be helpful to them. Total variety of topics. It can be nutrition, domestic violence, child abuse, health insurance, whatever it might be. When we receive a request, we do our best to find a speaker who can accommodate that particular topic. I'm not going to go through every component on this screen, because I know you all have access to this, and I don't want to take up too much of your time. But I will welcome any questions specific to any of those individual components. On this screen, you'll see in the current, current school year, July 2021 to March 2022, some of our numbers. These are specifically addressing many of the resources that we are referring to students. Each, each GRIP team in each city is comprised of a group of individuals, a deputy district attorney, a district attorney investigator, and either a probation officer or sheriff's deputy, as well as local law enforcement and a waymaker's case manager. The waymaker's case manager is absolutely vital to the success of the program. All of our case managers are bilingual. Our case managers are liaisons with the families. They are speaking to the families all the time to find out how we can help, what resources we can provide, how can we link the family and the students to community resources to help, whatever the situation might be. So you'll see on this board some of the resources that just this year alone, we have been able to connect families with. We partner with a number of large organizations all over the county. We're very fortunate to have a longstanding relationship with the Los Angeles Angels. We actually have a game coming up that many of your students in Anaheim have been working towards earning tickets. We have students earn these incentives through improvement, improvement in their behavior at school, improvement in their attendance, improvement in their academics, so they can feel proud of what they do. We think it's important for the community, large community organizations, to take responsibility for their community and for the students. And you'll see that we partner with Ralph's, Saddleback Church, Ford Motor Company, in addition to the Angels. Also during spring breaks, we put on soccer camps for the students, because we want the students to have a positive activity to engage in when they're not in school. It's also a wonderful opportunity to make sure they're receiving proper nutrition when school is out. On this screen, you'll see some of our measurable outcomes. We use evidence-based surveys to monitor how we are doing, how we are changing the, the students and the families that we are working with. You will see across the board in these surveys on the board, there is improvement throughout the year. This is from the 2020 to 2021 school year. We'll be redoing these statistics over the summer. But you see increase in resiliency, increase in attendance. 100% of faculty reporting they have more access to support services. OC GRIP is funded as far as our programming, as far as all of the incentives that we give, that we provide to your students, like the Angels game, like gift cards or clothes or whatever it might be that they are in need of. That is funded by the OC GRIP Foundation and will continue to be funded by the OC GRIP Foundation. This program is incredibly important to the district attorney's office, and my boss would like to grow this program, to have the ability to include schools who are on our waitlist. We do have a waitlist of schools. We do have a waitlist of, waitlist of school districts who would like to participate. We would like to bring this program to other schools that could benefit. And that is why we're here today. We're asking for you to invest in this program. Currently, the district attorney's office pays for the district attorney position, the deputy district attorney position, as well as the district attorney investigator position. In Anaheim, you do, there is an assigned probation officer to the team. That position is paid for by the probation department. There is a waymakers', which is the company providing our case management services. They also have a licensed marriage and family therapist that we have on staff, because mental health, as you all are very aware, is extremely important and has become, if not more critical, in the past year or two. We do have that therapist on staff, as well as a community event coordinator who communicates with our parents, who are volunteer parents, gets them the resources that they need. The district attorney's office pays for both of those positions. The Anaheim Police Department, we are super fortunate in Anaheim to have a very supportive police department who provides their own resources as well, and, and pays for those resources. We are asking the school districts to contribute to the, the salary for the assigned case manager in your city. So Anaheim has five schools. Anaheim Elementary, currently in OC GRIP. Anaheim Union has one school, currently in OC GRIP. What we're asking is for each school district to pair, to pay their respective fair share in contributing to that waymaker's salary. For Anaheim, that would be $80,970. And I'd like to give Chief Cisneros an opportunity to share his perspective as well.
Good evening, Board members. First and foremost, thank you for the ability to make some commentary today, and also for creating an educational base for our future leaders. Some of our future leaders have some socioeconomic issues that they are impacted by, such as food inequity, housing, technology, such as the use of internet, which hinders them for the ability to learn. In addition to that, many of our future leaders also have some community factors that they have to address, such as violence, bullying, gang induction, and lack of supervision. It is the intention of the Anaheim Police Department to enhance our community experience with those future leaders through prevention and intervention, hence, supporting OC GRIP and minimizing the enforcement portion, putting our, our future leaders into the criminal justice system. Our Anaheim Police Department has been involved with GRIP for numerous years, even prior to OC GRIP coming to the city. We see the value of this program. We're not here to stigmatize any individuals. We are here through prevention and intervention to make sure that these individuals have the opportunity, from that base of education that you do, to being able to accomplish all of their goals. I thank you for this opportunity.
I would, and I would just add that unfortunately, gang crime is up all over the county and in Anaheim. And our goal is to work with students on continuing to make good choices, go to school, do their homework, have positive attitudes, and never even get anywhere close to going down that road. Thank you very much for your time, and I'd welcome any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to start with thanking you for being here and for giving us such an informative presentation. So, welcome and thank you so much.
I have a few comments. One of the things that the chief just mentioned is that you're not here to stigmatize. In my opinion, just the name alone, OC GRIP, and involving the word "gang" is already stigmatizing my community. One question I have for you is, how do you come about choosing which communities you're representing as sending a group to, quote, "assist"? How do you choose those neighborhoods or those schools to target?
So quite often, schools reach out to me directly and ask for our services. We currently do have a waitlist of a number of schools that we simply don't have the resources to get to all of those schools. But typically, it's because we are contacted by the schools, sometimes by the school district, sometimes by law enforcement agency. But typically, it's because we are contacted and asked for our help.
Right, so you're mentioning there's a waitlist of people wanting to join.
Yes.
But then you're asking the school districts to also now pay, for example, our district, you said $80,000.
Yes.
What is the reason why you stopped getting the funding sources that you would get before? Because previous to this, I know you would fund it yourselves. Also, I noticed, I, I'm a teacher, so I used to be a GRIP mentor years ago, and the school that I was a mentor is no longer listed on your list. I'm also curious why those schools dropped the program.
I, I'm not, I can't answer your question about why your particular school is no longer on the list as far as OC GRIP. We, as I mentioned, we have been in Anaheim since 2017. We have had the same schools or added schools since then. So I can't speak to any other, maybe prior program. But for, for OC GRIP, it has been since 2017, and we've only added schools. Did that, sorry, did that answer your question?
Sure, and I also just want to make a comment that in order to best serve our students with regards to the needs they have, the social, emotional needs they have, I think as a society, we need to work on figuring out how we can support them socially through affordable housing. There's other outlets, things like that, that I feel would be more preventative in getting preventative in getting students to have the trauma they survive through that, maybe cause them to want to get involved in gang activity. And so I do thank you for all this, the, the support you're, you're trying to give our families, but I just don't feel like it's the adequate support with regards to how even the name of your group or your organization already frames our, our students as somehow having deficits, right? And so just wanted to let you know that, that's how I view that.
Thank you. And so I do want to add that some of the resources that we do make referrals for, for the students, do include utility assistance and rental assistance. So we use a wide variety of resources. And if we don't have a resource connection, we will do our best to look for it. So I totally agree with you that a, a lot of times, the economic challenges can be extreme, and we, we do our best to connect resources to solve those problems to the best of our ability as well. As far as the gang, the, the fact that gang is in our name, it is, it is not to stigmatize anyone. We do not work with gang members, period. We are a preventative program, and it's, it's my personal opinion that whether or not gang is in the name of our program, it doesn't change the fact that there's a problem that we need to address.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Where's my microphone? Hello, test, test? Echo. First of all, thank you very much for being here and for that presentation. Now, I, I used to be in a gang. I, in middle school, I attended Ball Junior High, and then when I turned fifteen, I was jumped into a Filipino gang, primarily because a lot of my family was in gangs. And you said in your last statement that you want to promote good choices and have our kids get anywhere, prevent them from going anywhere that road, not even getting close to that road. And then you just said right now that you don't work with any gang members. So how are we to work together? Right now, our nation is divided, and I know that the police department and communities want to find ways where we can work together. I want that too so desperately. I've lived in Anaheim since nineteen eighty-one, and it just seems like it's just back and forth, right? So divided. We need to work together. We can't not, not work with gangs because a lot of us know a gang member. A lot of us have families and gang members. If you're from this community, you can't not, not have had family or, you know, neighbors or it's embedded within us. We can't just separate the two. We got to find a way to work together. Thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. If, if I may respond, so we only work with fourth through eighth graders. I don't think I said that earlier, so just want to make that clear. I think that there are a lot of other wonderful programs that do work with people with other needs. Since we are a preventative program, we are working at the preventative level.
But those fourth and eighth graders have uncles and aunties that have, are in gangs. So do you work against them to not? In the end of the day, their families are there. Is it like you say, oh, don't be with your family?
No, many of the students we work with have family members that are in gangs. That's absolutely correct. The students that we work with are not in gangs, and we're trying to encourage them to not go down that road.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that you have been in our community with programs in various forms for many, many years. I remember McGruff, the Crime Dog. So, I mean, the department has definitely contributed to the community, to our youth, to our students, all along the way, so I'd like to acknowledge that and thank you. And also to say that obviously things have changed a, a lot from several years ago, and we're facing different kinds of issues. And so my question revolves around, and I tried to look through your presentation, I'm sorry if you said it, if I didn't catch it, but I, I don't see it. As we're getting into more areas where, you know, mental health services and things are going to be factors, where there's more resources, just a variety of resources that are needed for students and families, how do you choose your, your referrals? How do you connect with, if somebody is going to need mental health services? And if you said that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. How do you, how do you partner with, and how do you choose? Do you go through a process? Do you just, some are just available to you and you, and you take them, or how does that work?
Thank you. We, I, I would say probably one of our larger resources, especially in recent years, has been mental health referrals to whether it's therapy just for the student, whether it's therapy for the entire family, whatever it might be. We partner with many community organizations so that we can connect the family with that resource. One really nice thing about having our extensive case management services as well is that they can follow up with the family to make sure they were able to connect and get those mental health resources, or if necessary, follow up with the community-based mental health resource and make sure that the family and the, the community partner are connecting. So that follow-up is really helpful, especially if there's any nervousness or hesitancy on the part of the parent to reach out. But we, we make mental health referrals consistently, and sometimes the school might request that we make a mental health referral on a student or family. Sometimes we see something where we think it might be beneficial, and so it's very, very common for us to make those referrals.
So I was kind of wondering, the actual referrals, so you have a list that you are, are you used to partnering with, or how do you actually, you know, when you see a child or, or a family that needs services, do you, do you go to a list, or do you, do you have established partners already that either you have contracts with them or you just refer to them? That's what I was mainly trying to get at.
Oh, yes. Sorry, yes, we, we have established partners.
You have established partners?
Yes. Yes, we don't, we don't contract with them, but we have longstanding relationships.
Okay.
With, with many of those services.
Could you, could you name any of those partners?
Can't, yeah, I was, you don't have to, but...
One of the, we have, we have Olive Crest is a big one. We have Friendly Center is a big one, and sometimes there's crossover between different cities where, for example, because we have schools not just in Anaheim but all over the county, there might be a resource available in another city where we have a connection that we can refer a family. So we're not limited just to Anaheim.
Okay, thank you.
Anaheim, a few years back, started our own shelters for our citizens, so we don't just depend on the county. The City of Anaheim has invested a lot of dollars for those individuals who find themselves, unfortunately, without a home. In addition to that, about sixteen months ago, we started our Community Care Response Team. Previously, your police department would respond to numerous calls of mental illness, drug dependency, or homelessness that had no criminal nexus. I made, I made it my point to change that and to send clinicians, those individuals that have the expertise to address those issues. So we've been doing that for over sixteen months. We were the very first city in the county to move forward with that. In addition to that, now we work with Be Well OC, which is a countywide program. In addition to that, we have police officers and clinicians that work together on mental issues. We've added additional two groups of that again, and we look forward to hopefully getting additional funds to address those issues. Mental illness, drug dependency, and homelessness are quality life issues that are significant in our community, and obviously we understand that those issues impact our students, our future leaders, and through their education process are impacted. So today, obviously, we're here with OC, OC GRIP, but I just want this whole group to understand that there are other resources that we go through and that we work collaboratively together to make sure that we provide the best service possible for those individuals in need. The days of, you know, bringing your police department to all of these issues is long gone. We, we have to start to address this, these issues. Unfortunately, communities throughout this country thought that, you know, mental illness, drug dependency only happened between the hours of eight to five, Monday through Friday. So what happened? They said, oh, yeah, let the police department deal with those things. Well, we've pushed back, and we've pushed back because we want to put the right individuals to address those issues. And so that's what we've done. We're here to do prevention intervention and minimize the interaction that we need. Only the interaction that we need is when there is a criminal nexus or safety concern. So thank you for the opportunity.
And just one more thing, I would like clarification on, so we're talking about preventative measures. So I would see a preventative measure of having maybe a clinical social worker on staff, right? So can you give me the rationale of why instead of having social workers, case carriers, people who are in the mental health business, they're not listed as part of the staff that you have, that you pay for, but you have a district attorney, an investigator, a probation officer? So can you describe to me why those positions would be more valuable and having them on your team versus social workers and mental health professionals?
So we, we do have a mental, a mental health professional on our team. That's our licensed marriage and family therapist, and she provides a lot of that mental health expertise for us. This is a law enforcement-led program, as you mentioned. We do have a deputy DA, a district attorney investigator, and a probation officer. Those are the people who are out there every day, talking to the students, talking to the parents, building those relationships, encouraging students to pursue their dreams, to expose them to careers that they might not have been familiar with before, to talk through the challenges that they're having, to see how we can help, how we can provide resources, how we can provide experiences that would interest the student and inspire them.
Sure, I'm ju, I'm just, I'm a little perplexed because to me, it seems like the purpose of having the district attorney lead investigators, probation officers who are your staff, law enforcement, it's like more like, look at, look at us, look what we're doing for your kids and doing it for photo ops, and maybe for other gains that would serve the purpose of the police department and not the, the purpose of our families. And I'll just leave you with this. I live in Anaheim. I live in one of the, quote, poorest neighborhoods of Anaheim, highest crime rate in Anaheim in my zip code, ninety-eight oh one. And, and you coming to one of my schools and saying, I'm here and I'm OC GRIP, you're saying, you, Mr. Alvarez, your children are prone to be gang members, just because we're here. And so what bothers me is the stigma that you're providing to my community based on saying, we see this need in your space, and we're targeting your space based on whatever criteria, which I assume is mostly based on socioeconomic status and race, and saying, we're going to come in here and we're going to fix you. So you're saying you have some kind of deficit, there's something wrong with you. And that's where I'm kind of stuck. And so I just needed to say that, and I'll leave you that with that this evening. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
May I respond? Respectfully, I, I disagree. We, as I said, we are at schools all over the county. I, I would invite you to and encourage you to speak to any of our principals that are receiving our, our resources because they're, I think they are in a good position to address any concerns you might have, and also explain from, from their perspective, the value that, that they see that we are providing. But as I said, we provide services all over the county. We have a waitlist of schools that, that would like our resources if we can make it to their schools. We want to help students. You, you mentioned that this was a photo op for law enforcement. That couldn't be further from the truth. The people that work in OC GRIP do so because they care about the community, they care about the students, and they want to see students do the best that they can.
Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, so we're moving on to item E, AESD Staff Report for Material Revision of the Palm Lane Charter School Petition. Dr. Mary Grace.
Good evening, Board President Alvarez, Board members, and the Anaheim community. I am here tonight to provide an update on the staff review of the material revision for the Palm Lane Charter School petition. So just a little bit of background, on February fifteenth, Vista Charter Schools submitted a request for material revision seeking to update and revise the Palm Lane Charter School petition to comport and comply with the legislative mandates and otherwise to reflect the current operations of the school. On March ninth, we held a public hearing and to consider the level of support for the material revisions to the approved charter petition. The petition is currently approved through the end of school year 2025. The staff at Anaheim Elementary School District conducted a review of the documents provided, and a summary of the findings are that the materially revised Palm Lane Charter School petition meets the standards, standards as outlined in Education Code Section four-seven-six-oh-five. It includes a reasonably comprehensive description of the new requirements enacted into law since the Palm Lane Charter School was approved. After reviewing the documents submitted, the staff recommends that the board grant the material revision requested by Palm Lane Charter School, approving the charter school as so revised with May eleventh, twenty-twenty-two as the effective date of the revised charter, and adopt the attached resolution, Board Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two slash The next steps are the Palm Lane and Vista Charter School Boards will each meet to adopt the required agreement and plan of merger for filing with the Secretary of State. The New Century Corporation, which is the nonprofit that oversees the Palm Lane Charter School, is expected to cease operations on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. With that, are there any questions that I can answer for you?
I think we're good. Thank you, Dr. Grace.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's move on to the Palm Lane Charter School Report. Dr. Dawn Wilson, Superintendent of Vista Charter Public Schools.
Good evening, Honorable Board, President Alvarez. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. We are not going to take a lot of your time because we had the hearing a couple of months ago. There is a, oh, it's right there in front of me. All right, I just, you know, I need younger people to help me with the technology. And so we're not going to take a lot of time tonight. We just, but we, we wanted to just take a few moments to update you, let you know what we've done, what's going on, some of the things that you brought to our attention the last time, and then we have one very special reason we'd like to speak tonight. But one of the things that came up, and we thought it was a great question from the board, was about parent engagement and to dig a little deeper into what that meant. So we wanted to let you know that things that are planned and things that we'll be doing immediately, then things that have happened. So the Vista Board has already approved Palm Lane's Board to be represented on our Board. That's already taken place. Our Board is looking forward to inviting parents and members from that Board, not all of them, of course, but a, a couple of them to be on our Board. We also had a hiring committee for the principal, and that was a great, we had... We also had a hiring committee for the principal, and that was a great, we had parents, we had teachers, we had staff. So there was a full group of people, quite a large group, that participated in the hiring of the new principal, really the reason we would like to talk to you tonight. We've added, we are hiring a new bilingual culture and community coordinator. That's something that we have at our other schools. So that would be something that will be part of the Palm Lane staff as well. Also, one of the other things that we're excited to be able to start is the Parent University. Parent University is our system for bringing parents in and giving them opportunities to learn about whether it's for our middle school kids, a lot of times it's vaping and the issues that go around vaping. It could be working with social media. It could be how to help support your child academically. So a variety of subjects. We call that our Parent University. Also, we have a partnership with PKE. PKE is an organization that really supports our students and their families and their academic success and giving them success and helping guide parents to help them with their own, with their own students as well. Another big thing that we've done, and this is not just with Palm Lane, but it's most importantly with Palm Lane, is a huge revamp of their website. The website is not very navigate, navigational at this point. There's a lot of information that's hard to find. We're working with professionals to, not only to update theirs, we're updating ours as well. We like our website as it currently stands, but we've seen after having it done for three years, there's a lot of room for ways to be able to reach out, to know what parts of the, the website are parents going to, what are they accessing the most, what do we have to highlight the most? So those are things that we're working with right now. Again, we'll be adding a PTO for Palm Lane, something that we have at our other schools. And you mentioned parent surveys in addition to the ones we've done, which we've been very limited on those because, quite frankly, the things that we'd like to survey, we don't want to put out a survey until the decision's been made so that we don't get false promise to what is possible once we have, are supporting Palm Lane.
Good evening, Board, President Alvarez, Superintendent Downing. So I want to quickly talk about staff salaries and benefits. This is something that obviously the Palm Lane staff is very interested in. So from the very beginning, Dr. Wilson and I said that we want to make sure that we honor either Palm Lane's salary scale, or if it is an additional benefit to the Palm Lane staff, that we can switch them over to the Vista salary scale. So their salaries could only go up. And then in terms of benefits, the same, same thing. So each Palm Lane staff member who receives benefits will have the option to either stick with the benefits options with Palm Lane, or they could switch over to Vista's benefits. And we've already had our benefits administrator come to Palm Lane and present in front of the staff. In addition to salaries and benefits, I also want to mention that we have plans for comprehensive professional development over the summer and into next year through a number of our signature practices, including Way of Council, Kagan Structures, and Reader's and Writer's Workshop.
And for us, one part of our mission has always been very important that we have a robust and a very effective special ed program. And so we just want you to know that Palm Lane will be receiving onsite school psychologist, onsite speech language pathologist. We also have district-level special education, our specialist, and she is there to work with the SLPA, to work with the school, and to take some of the burden off of the RST so that they can actually do the work that they are, that they're being paid and called to do at the school site. We've already addressed case management, the caseload management, which was out of whack. That's already been addressed and that has been taken care of as well. And then the other thing that we think that having the larger team behind them is just access to that larger team, to be able to pick up the phone and know that there is somebody that is there that can help them, that can support them, that they haven't been able to have in the past outside. So that's another important part for the special education, to have that team across all of our schools.
And we also want to talk about how we are going to fulfill the mission and vision of Palm Lane. Palm Lane's mission and vision states STEAM, or even spells out science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, three times just in the mission and vision statement. It is that important to Palm Lane's identity. And so as a result, we are focusing on enhancing the art program. We want to bring Spanish to Palm Lane. We are enhancing the music program. We want to enhance what already is there with STEAM and really reimagine and continue to build the STEAM lab and Makerspace. Actually, Ms. Prado, who we're about to introduce, and Dr. Wilson and I are actually going to visit a number of other Makerspaces next week because we really want to see and imagine what we can bring to Palm Lane. And lastly, we really want to bring strong fiscal oversight and budget management to the Palm Lane community.
Which happens with our, we have somebody who meets with our principals once a week to go over budgets, to make sure that all of those things are taking place so that there are no surprises and that they can afford these programs. And I also want to say that our own Makerspace here in Orange County is spectacular, and we would love to invite you guys to see it anytime you'd like to come. I, I think one of the most important things that we've been able to help even before this point is that over the last three years, there has been an issue of continuous leadership at Palm Lane. One of the things that we pride ourselves on is all of our leaders have been with us. They've all stayed. They rarely leave. And so that's been something from eight years, 10 years, 12 years, people stay. This is my, next year will be my seventh year. We stay. We like what we're doing. And so part of that process of hiring the principal, as I mentioned, was very inclusive, parents, teachers, board members, everybody was there. They had an opportunity to, to go through the process and make that decision. And so tonight, what we'd really love to do is we'd love to introduce you to the newest member of the Palm Lane community, Ms. Debbie Prado.
Thank you. It's an honor and privilege to stand before you all today. While I'm proud of the seven, the years I have spent in education, this is my 17th year, I'm really most proud of the title I carry of being a mother. I am a mother of five children, and in my leadership, each day, I lead as a mother. I have been so taken back by the level of support, the energy, the enthusiasm at Palm Lane. I have quickly called it my home. I come from a school in South Los Angeles. I have spent the last seven years there. I understand the value of partnership. I understand the value that school for many of our students are home, away from home. And so a partnership with Vista will allow Palm Lane to really thrive. Everything is deeply rooted already at Palm Lane. I feel I just inherited it. With my experience that I bring, with my dedication and loyalty, and the partnership that this merge will bring, it will allow our teachers to collaborate with educators of five other schools across schools. It will allow our families to partner. And I'm excited, and I ask for your consideration of that merge, as I know it will directly benefit the students in Anaheim. Thank you for your time.
That's all our presentation for the evening. Thank you.
Any questions, anybody?
Dr. Wilson, I'm going to ask you the exact same question that I asked you last time you were here.
Which one?
What have you learned about the community?
So again, for me, the things that I have learned about the community is that this is a community that is deeply, deeply connected to Palm Lane. They love their school, they love their neighborhood, they love being able to walk across the street. The parents that I've had an opportunity to work with, and I've worked with quite a few since, with kids, they, they want to be there in the neighborhood. They want for their, they also, what the neighborhood is deeply, deeply connected to their roots, to their Latino roots. We, I have seen that deeply there. There is a sense of pride in the community. And quite frankly, the, the, the community has been one that seeks a school that understands them, that supports them, and that's been my experience. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I, I can tell I'm not answering your question, and I'm sorry. I wish I knew what it is that you were looking for. But these are the things that I, my experience has been sitting there in that I was there three days a week. I was with the teachers, I'm with the families, going to the local stores, going grocery shopping before I go home. These are the things that, that I have seen in the community.
The next question I have, can you elaborate on the Spanish program that you were talking about?
So we're actually, we're actually working with and starting to negotiate with an organization called Language Door in Orange County. And so they have tutoring programs and such, but we're actually talking to them about bringing on a part-time teacher as a special elective class for each of the, the classes at Palm Lane.
Back to the first slide. I might not have this correct. I just want to clarify, are you saying that when you're talking about already approved Palm Lane's board to be represented on the VCPS board, you're talking about the Board of Ed that's present?
I can clarify that. So we are Vista Charter Public Schools Board, has already had a discussion and approved that they will bring on members from the Palm Lane board so that, that, so that the community is represented, you know, on our, on the board. So the Palm Lane board will be dissolved as it currently stands, once the material revision goes through. To ensure that the community has representation, our board has said, of course, they would be happy to bring on a couple of the members from the Palm Lane board to join the board and be representatives of the community.
And we don't know who those people would be at this point, do we?
We have an idea, but I wouldn't, I would be, I know, I mean, I don't want to speak for anybody, and I don't know if I'm speaking out of line to say it, but I, Geronimo, I know, is really excited to participate, and that's the one that I know for sure. And then we have other members that will express their desire once there is a, once they can.
How many are, did you say two, or how many have you decided?
Probably two, I imagine, it'll be two.
What would that bring the total of your board, then?
It'll bring it up to eight, but we do have a couple of members that are leaving. One is moving to Texas, and one is dealing with some health issues, so we don't know if she's going to continue.
Where are your meetings going to take place?
So they traditionally have been taking place in Los Angeles, but our meetings will be moving to Orange County because we now have more students in Orange County than we have in Los Angeles. And so that is one of the regulations that wherever you have most of your students, that's the county, we have multiple counties, that's the county where you hold your, your meeting. However, all of our schools are equipped with interactive boardrooms, so they are being filmed, we record every meeting, there's interaction. You can either come in on a Zoom, you can attend, what, we haven't attended in person post-COVID yet, but once we start attending post-COVID in person, that's how it'll work. So the main meeting will be in Orange County, but then you can attend, you can either go to your school and attend there, or you can attend virtually, as long as the state allows us to do that.
And what does your music program look like specifically?
So we have a variety of music programs at each school. In fact, today I was at the spring concert for the elementary school in Santa Ana. We have a full-time music teacher for art schools in Orange County. That includes, in Orange County, it's choir, it's ukulele, it's guitar, piano, it includes the recorder, I know they played that today as well, the recorder. But Ms. Gallardi is an amazing music teacher. In Los Angeles, at the middle school, we have a full-time music teacher as well that has an orchestra and band component to it, so the kids and a choir component. And then our elementary school in Los Angeles, it is a ORF, the teacher there, it's not full-time because it's a very small school, but kids receive the same amount of time they would had she been full-time. And that is an ORF program where kids have a variety of opportunities to make music and to learn music using glockophones, using different kinds of instruments as they learn musicality. And then right now, I'm working with Dr. Knuckles, he's the Vice President of the LA Opera, and we are working with them and the Colburn to create a program that will be one similar to what was done in Venezuela with Dudamel, but instead of being orchestra, it will be a voice based on choral music. And the reason behind that is that for anyone who's had a child, who's learned violin or another instrument, sometimes it takes a long time to be able to make beautiful music with your instrument. However, with voice, what they're finding is that kids can make beautiful music very, very quickly and be brought into the world of the arts that way.
Okay, thank you for that. But leading, tagging on to Dr. McGillis's question about understanding the community or what you've learned, I didn't hear you mention mariachi in any of that.
So, yeah, so we, I love mariachi. I lived in Mexico for many, many years. It's a, it's very dear to my heart. I won't sing any for you because I'll close down the meeting. But no, we don't, we do not have a mariachi component in Santa Ana right now, but Ms. Gallardi, she's Cuban, and she definitely brings a Latina perspective to the music there. That's true also with ORF. ORF is very culturally sensitive. In our elementary school, it's not just, we have just Latino, we also have a large Korean community, so they approach it that way. And that's the same in all of our schools. But these are decisions that can be made as we move into, into the school, as we hire a music teacher. Absolutely, having a mariachi or a Latino music component would be amazing. It's not something we're against, it's just not something that we have at our other schools.
And I'm not faulting you for having it or not having it, I'm just saying it was a little ironic to me that you say you know this community and it's not even mentioned as a possibility, which I think would be a very strong component of your music program in the Palm Lane area.
I totally agree. You'd asked me what we, what our programs were like at our other schools?
No, I was just asking what, I, I really honestly don't necessarily care what you have at your other schools. I care about what you're going to offer at Palm Lane. I care about what the Palm Lane community is going to be receiving from you. And I wanted to know what the music program for the Palm Lane school is going to look like from you.
Oh, then I apologize. I misunderstood the question.
It's okay, no apology necessary.
I thought you were asking about our other programs.
Yeah, anything that I'm asking is only related to Palm Lane, and so, you know, I'm not trying to really pin you down, but I'm just surprised that your answer didn't include...
Honestly, I misunderstood. I thought you asked what our programs were at our other schools, not what, not what is proposed at Palm Lane. So the question that I answered was what I thought I had heard. But again, when we, when we get to, we are not at a point, we haven't been given the ability to create a program at Palm Lane yet. So once that happens, this is going to happen just the way we did with the, with hiring of the principal. It's going to happen with teachers having a voice, parents having a voice, students having a voice, to be able to create the kind of program that will speak to their, to their community. And, but that has to happen once we actually have the authority to, to do those things.
And I should have clarified that, but I just thought we were all under the understanding that we're really only discussing Palm Lane here tonight. And so lastly, I, I have felt like the parent community at Palm Lane, and I've been on this, I've been on this board since day one, since the petitions were filed. since we started five, six years ago. And I have watched a lot of disappointing things happen. And it's often felt like the parents have been swept along in a current. There's a group of parents that really were vocal in guiding this ship, but there were a lot of parents, it appeared to just be swept along. So I I think I asked you this before and I didn't really, wasn't very confident with your answer of your answer, but it was, how do you know that all of the parents want this change? How how were they reached, all of them? I mean, I'm not talking about a small core group. Or if you did a survey and 20 people answered, how did you reach out to the entire community of your students to really get the parental input on if they want this change? What did you use and what were the results?
Right, so a couple of different ways we did that. One of the main ways was when this opportunity came up, we held multiple meetings. We held them, I was at Palm Lane, but we held them virtually. I did them in Spanish and I did them in English. We had hundreds of parents attend those meetings. We also did a survey with the parents. And in that survey, even though we had about a hundred or more, we what's that?
A little over.
A little over a hundred people returned the survey, but it represented more than 100 students. It represented, it was, because multiple families have more than one student. So it did represent more than 60% that actually returned information to us. So between our meetings, between input, between the surveys, and then being there three days a week for two months, I gave me an opportunity to also speak to parents in the morning and the evenings.
I'm guessing, you know, and I'm trying to really get to the heart of this is that just being on a Zoom or virtual meeting doesn't really gauge a response of what the parents want. You haven't said returning the surveys unless I missed it, I apologize.
Yeah, we had the surveys, yeah.
What percentage wanted it and what percentage didn't?
We've had, we've had, for the exception of one person that I've spoken with, we've had everyone be affirmative for the, for this to happen. I've had one person.
Did you get any responses from the virtual meetings? Did you have any follow-up? Did you have any feedback? Were there, were they allowed to put information on the website? To be able to say, yes, I heard, I took this information in, assimilated this information, and here's what I think about it? Was there anything from those virtual meetings that gave the parents the opportunity to put forward their opinions through a website or anything like that?
Not through a website, but through the survey, yeah.
Okay, that was all, thank you.
And that was, and the surveys followed up our meetings. And again, the meetings went on for a long time. We took a lot of questions and we had an opportunity. And then Lisette has also, who is amazing, has followed up with our parents and continue to follow up and meet with them as well. They come in. So we have the, from Lisette, Lisette also is one of our main components, talking to parents. Now that we have Ms. Prado here, she's had an opportunity. She had 125 parents show up yesterday, excited about this, excited to be a part of Palm Lane. And so our experience is that we have, like I said, with the exception of one parent, we've had 199.9% affirmative so far.
Of the responses which were about 100, you said?
It was, it was, it was over 100. Lisette had told us like 100 and 120 responses.
And your total enrollment is?
280, it's gone up, but 288, yeah.
So there's 288 students there. We actually counted how many unique families there are because many of the families have two or three kids. And so there's just under 200 unique families. So 120 responses from the survey out of approximately 195.
Death, that factored in other, more children.
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you. And board members, I'm sorry I took up so much time, but I'm finished with that for now.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
All right, in the spirit of how we adjusted the agenda earlier, I believe that Ms. Barrios, Rosa Barrios is here and I'd like to call her up for her DACTDILAC report. Thank you so much, Rosa.
Buenas tardes, es un placer estar el día de hoy en esta reunión. Me llamo Rosa María Barrios, madre líder de la escuela James Gwin, y soy parte de PLI y también soy la secretaria de DACTDILAC.
Good afternoon, it's a pleasure to be here today at this meeting. My name is Rosa Barrios, parent leader at Gwin Elementary School. I'm part of PLI and I'm also the DACTDILAC secretary.
Como padre, me encanta estar involucrada en todo lo relacionado en fortalecer la educación de nuestros niños.
As part of a parent, as a parent, I love being in all things related to strengthening our children's education.
Ya que tengo la oportunidad, quiero agradecerles también por su labor en estos tiempos difíciles y por continuar proporcionando clínica de vacunación, pruebas de detección del COVID para estudiantes, padres y personal.
Now that I have the opportunity, I would also like to thank you for all your work in this difficult time and for continuing to provide vaccine clinics and COVID-19 testing for students, parents, and staff.
Además, me gustaría comentarles que actualmente se ha visto un aumento de eventos en donde se ha comprometido la seguridad de nuestros niños. Por tal razón quisiera pedirles que se refuerce la seguridad en las áreas de nuestras escuelas con patrulleros o cámaras.
I would also like to mention that currently we have seen an increase in events where our children's safety has been compromised, which is why I would like to ask you to strengthen security in our school areas with patrol cars or cameras.
Sé también que actualmente están haciendo todo lo posible por la contratación de personal debido a la escasez del mismo. Y por ello les pido se refuerce con personal especializado que apoyen a los maestros a liderar con casos de niños con temperamentos difíciles y conflictivos. Que en la mayor parte les toca los directores o subdirectores desempeñar este papel.
I also know that you're currently doing everything possible to hire staff given the shortage of employees. Therefore, I ask that you support them with specialized employees or personals to help teachers in dealing with cases of children with difficult and conflicted temperaments, a role that most, most partfalls to principals or vice principals.
En nuestra última junta de DACTDILAC, nos informaron que a partir del 2 de mayo se encuentra ya disponible la aplicación para voluntarios, la cual estará procesando a todos aquellos voluntarios por nivel uno y dos de A E S D, e incluye los requisitos que deben cumplir el voluntario en cada nivel.
At our last DACTDILAC meeting, we were informed that as of May 2, the volunteer application is now available and we will be processing all those A E S D level one and level two volunteers and includes the requirements that volunteers must meet at each level.
Y por último, nuestra siguiente junta será el 17 de mayo y se presentará un informe sobre el desarrollo de un plan maestro del distrito para programas y servicios educativos para estudiantes de inglés y las metas El Cap.
Lastly, our next meeting will be May 17 and a report will be presented on the development of a district master plan for educational programs and services for English learners and El Cap goals.
Por sople apreciable atención, estoy muy agradecida. Buenas tardes.
Thank you for your kind attention. I appreciate it very much. Have a good evening.
Muchas gracias, Rosa. Okay, we're moving on to item 4G, Measure G and J Bond Program Project Update. Steve K., LPA Inc., John Dale and Grace Milinkoff, HED Architects, Steve Wilkerson, HMC Architects, Isela Vasquez, Senior Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, Jessica Chavilla, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Board President Alvarez and Board Members. As you know, we have begun the next phase of our Measure G, J Bond Program projects. These projects include the reconstruction of Patrick Henry School as well as multipurpose rooms at Benito Juárez and Paul Revere Schools and the addition of a library Student Services Building at Edison School. And so this evening, our objective is to provide you a quick summary of where the work is. So I'm going to have Isela Vasquez, our senior, our senior director of facilities and construction, just say a few words and then introduce the architect firms that are working in these various projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chavilla. Good evening again, Board President Alvarez, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Downey, administrators and guests. Since the Board approved the facilities master plan update and the priority project list in March of 2021, staff has circulated a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services. And through this process, 35 architectural firms submitted an interest to work with the district. Of those, tonight you will hear from three firms that were assigned and awarded the projects being presented this evening. So you will receive an update from LPA for the reconstruction of Henry Elementary School. HED Architects will present the new MPRs at Juárez and Revere. And lastly, HMC Architects will speak on the new Library and Student Services Building at Edison. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Hayward with LPA to speak on the Henry Reconstruction Project.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board President Alvarez, Board Members, District Staff and Community Members. I'm privileged to be here this evening to talk about Patrick Henry Elementary and let you know where we are in the process, which is very early on. So I expect to be back here giving you an update again in the future and look forward to that very much. So relative to the master plan Isela just spoke about back in 2021, it always starts with sort of the existing site conditions that exist today so that any community member can look at that diagram and get an understanding of what that campus looks like. Some of the site priorities that were discussed were about traffic circulation, reconfiguring parking, reconfiguring drop-off, making sure the site's secure, having a safe path to school, and having curb appeal. That was something that came up significantly. And speaking with the principal specifically, and something I've kind of heard a theme of tonight, is that these schools are second homes. And he has talked about that for this particular school as we've been through the planning process to date. So an exciting challenge for us in making sure that that feels like a second home for the students and families. From a conceptual plan standpoint of the master plan, this was the original master plan scope in terms of making sure to identify all new construction and having new admin MPR, much similar to what you've seen both at Roosevelt and to an extent Sunkist, although Sunkist did keep a few buildings in place, but ultimately with the same student capacity as Sunkist Elementary. So in speaking with the site, always sort of when you start to dig into a project, we really get to know everyone there, the site, the staff, and sort of understanding their greater needs. And so this changed a little bit based on our first conversations with them from a concept plan. You'll see in the master plan, the parking lot was slated to be on the west edge of the campus with the admin MPR and things of that nature, the very public spaces on the west edge of campus facing more the residential next to the the school rather than the street frontage, because it is kind of a narrower street frontage for a school. And speaking with the campus, we really started to reconfigure that and reconsider that. So to have a strong campus front door, to be really welcoming to the community, the students and the parents, really having that forward-facing front door and curb appeal, really warranted having that parking lot and drop-off and all of those public spaces right at the front of the campus and keeping the classrooms and more student-oriented spaces tucked behind that from a protective standpoint and also allowing them to frame and open up onto a quad to provide great supervision, have a great learning opportunity as to how that quad develops into learning spaces for the outdoors and then the playfields and hardcourts up above that. So really opening up the site to be able to have kids experience all facets. So this is really where we're at to date in terms of starting to look at that. Earlier this week, we had the opportunity to meet with district staff and confirm the program. So now that we have that, we are ready to get rolling at a faster pace. We look forward to meeting with the site. Again, moving forward to start playing with what this starts to look like and really make this new home for Patrick Henry, Henry Singh. So this is in really tiny font, a program summary of what the program will entail on the campus to service the number of students. It comes out to about 80,000 square feet total for the reconstruction of that campus. And if there's no questions, I'll hand off to HED.
Good evening, esteemed Board Members and Superintendent and Cabinet. I'm John Dale with HED. Very pleased to be here tonight to give you an update with my colleague Grace Milinkoff on two campuses, on Benito Juárez Elementary School and Paul Revere Elementary School. And so we're going to start with Benito Juárez, a school from, I believe, the 1960s, an immaculate campus, I must say, in in really top condition. And as you can see on this diagram, we have a very particular addition to focus on the new multipurpose building, which is going to be located at the southwest corner of the buildings making up the elementary school. And then we're doing a renovation in the interior of Building B to bring up the library, innovation, innovation lab and additional facilities. So these are the areas that we're focused on and their location. We went through a really terrific workshop process. We had multiple workshops on on campus and one, one in one of your other new facilities just to give people a taste of what was coming forward. The multipurpose building, roughly a 13,000 square foot building, closely reflects the master plan template that was developed by LPA. We have two significant classrooms, a music classroom and a, and a, and a flex classroom, the kitchen and service areas, the multipurpose and stage, and a generous outdoor lunch shelter immediately adjacent to the multipurpose. This is Building B where we are doing some reconfiguration to create three, three new classrooms, support spaces and a reconfigured library. So this is also, we've had very energetic response to how we do that. The, the building is designed to weave into the existing campus. It has what we refer to as a butterfly roof, which reflects the kind of roof forms of the existing buildings and also sets up for the future a south-facing slope for future photovoltaics. That's an opportunity which is not funded at the moment, but which we want to plan for for the future. So these are what the elevations look like. This is a view looking at the lunch shelter on the upper, the upper image with the multipurpose hall behind. And of course, lots of sliding glass doors that reflect the standard that's been established by the district. And then just some perspectives to give you a sense of where the new multipurpose building sits, very accessible to the south parking lot for evening events, but also very accessible to the campus itself. The, the main entrance faces the other classrooms and has equally convenient for visitors and for students and teachers on campus. And a final perspective view from the southwest, looking towards the campus with Building B in the background. And you can see the potential for future photovoltaics depicted on the sloping roof of the, of the multipurpose hall itself. A final image from within the campus looking south towards the lunch shelter with the glazed doors leading into the multipurpose room. And the main entrance is along to the left, facing this main walkway that connects all parts of the campus.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez and Board member?
I did have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. For the Benito Juarez one, and I know that you didn't work on this project when it was designed in the nineteen-sixties or whatever, but can you explain to me what the purpose is? Because there's a few of our schools that have this like structure that's there with like a rooftop kind of thing. Like, what is that? Like, why do they have that? Is it just for brain shelter or what is the purpose of it?
I think it is intended, and I didn't design that school, obviously, even though you might guess I did from my white hair. But, no, it seems to be an entry marker, you know, a kind of, instead of a clock tower, it's a kind of cantilever dramatic structure. It has a plaque commemorating the founding of the school at the base of it.
Huh. I went to that school. I've always wondered that. I'm always like, what's the point of this, you know? Like, so, just curious.
And actually, our civil engineer who's working on the project, Bill Armstrong, was also a student of that school. So we do have a nice connection there.
Gotcha. Nice. Thank you.
So now I'm excited to introduce our work progress on the Paul Revere Elementary School MPR building. So this school also have a similar architectural style. So later you can see from our rendering, you can see the building style. So the first slide shows you the existing site plan and this indicate the work limits we will be working on this school. So you can see the location shows you the new proposed MPR building. And also, we are going to expanding the existing parking lot to add another staff parking, which can accommodate fifty-seven new parking stalls. And this is another overall site plan. So you can see the building, the new MPR building is very close to the existing building, which can create a more intimate courtyard, you know, for students, easy access from the existing to the new building and also provide a close proximity for teachers' supervision. So this is like, it's very similar program and also the same script footage as we showed you previously. So we will have a large lunch shelter, but now we want to call it actually outdoor learning space. And you can see we have all these glass door connect to the lunch shelter and also provide a very nice shaded area for learning. And go back to the previous site plan. So the lunch shelter, the outdoor learning is facing north, which so you can receive, you know, soft and comfortable daylighting, but not too hot when they are outdoor. So the peach color is the kitchen area. And we have two large music room and also a flex lab and multipurpose room connect to the stage area. Sorry. Again, because we want to adapt and want to mimic the existing architectural style, you can see this angulated butterfly roof easily carry on the existing architectural style. So the new building will blend it very well into the campus. And we use a distinct square color so to give the feeling to this new building so they can well blend it to the campus. So this is another view, is connecting to the outdoor learning space and lunch shelter. In the lower side is another elevation. And I want to answer your question, why we want to design this type of roof. There's another reason, because we want to create a higher volume so they can receive the natural lighting. So it's not just, you know, you can create a little different angle so they can create more dramatic and they also receive a natural lighting from the clear story on the top. And also because of this setting, we set up the infrastructure to receive future PC panels facing to the south for the future energy, you know, collection. So this is the bird eye view to show you the location of the new building. And you can see the new entrance is at the west, so connect to the existing hall path area as the playground and also the sport field. This is another view further apart. And this is a closer look, eye level view. So you can see that, I just mentioned, you can see the clear story on the top so they can receive the natural lighting to the building. And I want to mention that this uplifting butterfly roof also want to signify an elevating spirit strive for success in the learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Alvarez, members of the Board, Dr. Downing. My name is Steve Wolkerston. I'm a principal with HMC Architects. And we're designing the Edison Student Services Library Building. We're very early on in the process, excuse me. We're in the, early in the planning stages right now. In fact, we had our second site committee meeting on this Monday. So I'm gonna share with you that presentation and the discussion from that particular meeting. Sorry, it's a little small, but it's, that's the existing site as it stands today. Showing the relationship and the context of the buildings with the drop-offs and the hardcourts and fields. And this is a copy of the updated master plan from March 2021, which shows the building there, sort of in the middle to the left. That was planned with two learning centers and a research and innovation center. About seventy-five hundred square feet was planned for it. So Isela and her team invited us to visit a couple of example sites that had recent projects like this type. And one of them was Sunkist Elementary School. So we had the opportunity to visit the school, talk to some people that work in that space. And we like to be good listeners first, try and inform our design to reflect what the goals are of the staff and the community there. So we got an idea of what works, in their mind, what works. And natural light played a huge part of the quality of the space, but also that connection to community. And then also what was good is we learned things that, what would you consider doing next time or, you know, do better? So we got an idea of that as well. Then we also visited Roosevelt. And these are pictures of the interiors of the library and maker space there. And similarly, what works and what else would we consider? And so we also showed them some sampling of our library projects just to show that, you know, we really don't come in with preconceived ideas about what something's gonna be. We want to take the inspiration about what the site, what the goals are of the stakeholders and the users. So it just shows you different examples of libraries we did. That's a library and maker space for an elementary school. This is a library for a K through eight school. Very different, but, you know, it's a very different site and very different context. And then a civic, this is actually a civic library in Riverside. And, you know, very different. So we don't really come in with any preconceived goals of how things are gonna look. We will try and be listeners first and really absorb what the community and the stakeholders want. And by the way, your principal Suzanne, there's a bundle of energy. Just like to plug into her and get that energy from her. But she has, anyway, it's a great, the great two meetings. If you've only had two meetings, we have a lot of ideas. But that's what this whole first two meetings has been about, is ideas. What are the goals? What do you want the building and project to achieve? And, I'm sorry, I can't see what I actually wrote there on the screen. But anyway, we had a, what we call a visioning session. We asked them, what do you want this building to achieve? What do you want the project to achieve? And so we had thirty, forty, maybe even fifty different statements. We boiled it down to like major themes. And these are those four themes that came out. And the first one is really that connection to create an environment in a building that welcomes the community and for the neighborhood to enjoy it and use it. And so that was probably the biggest one that came across. And then designing a multi-functioning facility to accommodate a variety of activities. It's going beyond the library. It's going beyond the learning centers. It's the stakeholders, the district, using it for a variety of different reasons and be totally community-based. Then it got into some detail. I think the third one is, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Provide an efficient workspace. Okay, thank you very much. Provide clear entries and efficient workspace for sightlines. You know, there's usually one person working in the library. And so that person has to observe all the activities going on in the space, but also be, have a sense of security. And so you have to have great sightlines and have it open enough so that one person can be in sort of one spot and sort of see all that's going on because you might be the only person there. And then the fourth one is ensure internal functions are universally accessible. That's an important part and extremely important part. There are kids there of different sizes, different ages, different abilities, and as well as staff. So you gotta accommodate that all at once and be welcoming and make people feel that it is part of their home, which you've heard a lot about today. So then we started looking into spatial planning ideas. And really, this is all diagrammatic at a level. But one thing we wanted to look at first were what were the circulation patterns on the campus? And how does that inform what happens to the building? And those orange circles are areas where the circulation pattern sort of converge. And so in our mind, and which we shared at the meeting, was that this building really probably needs two entries. One for the community, that really announces itself to the community, but also from the school side, and that's conducive for just the school traffic as well. But into one building. And then so we placed the building, which is that rectangular blue shape, sort of elongated to address that, but also the environmental aspect as well. The two yellow circles are east and west. And so that's the harshest exposures. So let me go to the next one and show you what. So the building located there has the big blue area, which is the main open research center and innovation lab, surrounded by the support spaces around it. So what that does is it protects it from noise to let the library be a little bit more quieter space. So the support spaces that surround it blocks the noise from the fields and from the hardcourts. But it also helps protect it from the sun. The harshest directions of the sun are east and west, so it helps control that. The northern end of the library space is facing north. So that's the best, that's free light. It's indirect, it's not harmful or harsh. And so the building has that elongated shape and the spaces are organized around it for a lot of reasons like that. So the one thing, we have two site plans. One is keeping the existing building, where the existing library is. The site really wanted to entertain the idea of keeping that building rather than demolishing it. And because of just the use, multi-use nature, collaborative nature of the site. So we looked at that option. The second option was to keep, was to remove the building from the site. And what would that do? We could improve the circulation pattern. We could use the opportunity to actually increase the visibility of the administration from the street and then announce the school for better branding, better signage and just better frontage from the street. Ultimately, the site chose to keep the building and repurpose it into something else that they could use. So I'm gonna work with Isela on how the budget's affected and go from there. So this is a diagram of the building. It's what we call bubble diagrams. It's where we're looking to what relationships are between the spaces to each other. The blue area there is the research and innovation center with the innovation lab. All that can open, I'm sorry, all that can open up and be one big open space. And then there's an outdoor learning area to the north. And then the, like I said, the support spaces surround the building, which has two learning center classrooms and offices. And other spaces protect that space from noise and from, from, control the light. But the main space there will be nice and open and actually we anticipate a larger, a taller volume in that space. So it can let light in from all the sides. But on the south side, we'd probably bounce light off the lower roof to not have direct light into the space from the south, but have a nice quality of light in the library. Natural light is a huge factor in education and kids' performance. It's actually evidence-based to have good natural light. So tentatively, it's early on in the process. We're still doing site testing and studies on the site. So it can always uncover things we don't know at the moment. That could affect schedule. But I call this like a roadmap. It helps us get to point A to point B and get to the end there. It's about twenty-seven months. So possibly by the end of summer 2024 is maybe the time this might be constructed by. And that's it. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Comments, questions for members? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to present these exciting projects to you and give you an update. If there aren't any questions, then this concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your work.
I'd just like to say, very well done. That's a lot of work, a lot of work, so thank you.
The architects are doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Yeah, just very super exciting, you know? We're excited for how these schools are gonna look and, you know, they're gonna be awesome. And I'm very proud of how Sunkist turned out and how Roosevelt turned out. I mean, they're beautiful, they're modern, I mean, it's great stuff. So it makes me happy to hear that you are touring sites like Sunkist to go check out their multipurpose room and whatnot. So that's good.
I'd also like to recognize my staff, Alex Kang and Henry Castro. They're our project managers and they're doing an incredible job as well.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to item five, news and updates. I think there are no association updates. Am I correct? Okay, and then district news, there's none. Onto item six, public speakers, speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. I believe there are, there was one that was sent online and then there were two in person. Should we do the online one first? Now, Yessenia, read it. Go ahead, Yessenia. Thank you.
So we had one comment from an AHT employee. And the public comment reads, what can we do about the class sizes for the after-school program? At my school site, there are more students in my classroom than there are chairs. Students are sitting on the floor or in the backpack closet. They don't mind sharing my classroom, however, there must be some type of order. Students are not doing their homework during this time. They are playing Pac-Man. Many of them go on YouTube to play punk rock music for all to hear or sit there making inappropriate noises. I've also taken pictures of the chaos that is the homework club. Please come up with a solution to this issue.
Thank you, Yessenia. All right, let's move on to our next speaker, Nicole Hudson. You can join us at the podium, please. And then just so you know, Nicole, you're gonna get three minutes to speak. Board Clerk Phil Beck will hold up the card when you have, the yellow card when you have one minute left and then red when your time is up. Okay? Thank you for joining us. Go ahead.
Thank you for having me. So my name is Nicole Hudson. I am now finishing my second year as a teacher at Palm Lane. I teach kindergarten, so the crayons on my pants are like not a fashion statement. It's just my life. And even more than that, I have lived in Anaheim my whole life. I was born in Anaheim, raised in Anaheim. I am a nine-two-eight-zero-four, so I am on the Savannah School Side District. I, don't hold it against me tonight, but this is my community. This is my world. My parents from Garden Grove, my grandparents are from Garden Grove. So this little corner that we're in right now is my place. This is my happy place. This is my home. So I'm really honored to speak here and I'm really honored to work in Anaheim. And Palm Lane is such a special place because we almost have every single puzzle piece we need. Our biggest one is the community. I can call any parent at any time and they are there. We talk about their students, we talk about their life before school, after school. Luckily, they're teaching me how to do, how to speak Spanish a lot better. So I'm really grateful for what I'm learning too. We also have amazing teachers. I'm sure you know what we've gone through in the past year and then on top of that, what everyone's gone through, through COVID. And we have amazing educators sitting here right now at almost nine PM on a school night. Just remember that, Ms. Prado, okay? Nine PM on a school night, sitting here and to support our school. So we have the community and we have the people and we have the students. I have never seen students so in love with learning and so excited to be in the classroom singing and dancing. I don't think I've ever sung and danced so much in my whole life. But the one piece that we have always, always not had is the ease of access to resources and leadership that had expertise, always. I was looking at that list that Don, Don Wilson had of, we're gonna get an art teacher, we're gonna get a Spanish teacher and a steam teacher. And I'm sitting here like, thank goodness, I've been wearing five hats for two years and I love it. I love doing artist deep dives and I love building with my kids. But they're not getting the quality educator from me because I'm so spread thin. Or on top of that, I have a lot of students who have a lot of needs outside of school. I'm one person without this extra resources because we've always been one school, one isolated island, one administrator, another administrator. I never knew who to turn to, where to go, who to ask questions to, where to refer parents to. And I'm not just saying this because Dr. Wilson is standing right here. That has changed since Vista has come. I now have access to resources. I now know when I have a question, I have someone to go to who will respond. I now know when I have problems with students' behavior, which I know are stemming from what they're dealing with at home, I have people to talk to and people who are gonna have my back. So I hope tonight when you vote that you do think about that. We are educators who care a lot about our students and that we want those resources and we want that leadership so we can give our students the equity they deserve and what their parents fought so hard for. Thank you.
All right, next we have Cecilia Ochoa. Hi Cecilia, you have three minutes and you have one minute left. In español?
Sí, Liz me va a traducir.
Para que sepa, le va a tener tres minutos para hablar. Cuando lleguemos a que le falte un minuto, la señora Philbeck le va a enseñar una carta a María para que sepa, y luego al fin de su tiempo le va a dar una carta roja para que sepa que el terminó el, el tiempo. Muchas gracias. Y como tiene tradu, traducción, le vamos a dar seis minutos.
Sí, ya sé, gracias. Buenas noches, mesa directiva. Estamos otra vez aquí para pedir su apoyo, para que le den su vi, su visto bueno a Vista, para que sea quien maneje nuestra escuela.
Good night, everyone in the board. We're here again, here to ask you if you can please approve for Vista to manage your school.
Ha basado lo que le preguntaron a doctor Wilson. Ojalá que todos estos programas y clases de música no los, no los hubieran ofrecido ustedes cuando, cuando ustedes tenían nuestra escuela.
Referring to the question you guys made, Dr. Wilson, I wish that the programs he listed, which included music, you guys would have offered it to when you guys had Palm Lane.
También cuando ustedes tenían la escuela, nunca veíamos a nadie de ustedes en la escuela. Solo hasta cuando comenzaron los problemas fue que las personas los conocieron.
In addition, when Palm Lane was part of the district, we never saw any of the board members until the last day when problems were known.
También los, los padres, los padres nos sentimos muy cómodos al comunicarnos en nuestro mismo idioma y vemos que nos escuchan, nos apoyan y toman en cuen, nos toman en cuenta, en cuenta cuando hablamos con el doctor Wilson.
We as parents also feel more comfortable in being able to communicate in our own language in our own school with Dr. Wilson.
También vemos que preguntan mucho cuando ustedes nunca nos dieron, por muchos, muchos años nunca nos dieron nada para la escuela.
We also see that you guys asked a lot of questions when you yourselves didn't do much for our schools when you guys had it for years.
No esperen que ellos apenas comiencen y ya tengan, ya tengan todo cuando ustedes por muchísimos años, muchísimos años nos daban solo lo que ustedes querían.
It's not fair for you to expect Vista to have all these plans when they just are taking, taking over Palm Lane when you guys didn't do much when you had Palm Lane for years.
Esperamos contar con su apoyo para que esta petición se, se, se haga realidad para nosotros, los padres y nuestros valiosos hijos.
We hope that we count with your vote regarding this petition to make our dreams a reality and our child's dreams as well.
Juntos tenemos muchas metas por cumplir. Gracias.
We have a lot of goals that we wanna meet as a team.
Gracias y que pasen buenas noches.
Good night.
Buenas noches, gracias. Okay, moving on to item seven, superintendent's report. We have item A, AESD safety update. Tracy Golden, senior director of school safety and operations.
Good evening, everyone. I have a really quick update for the COVID testing numbers that we give at every meeting. So we are still right around five hundred a week. These are testing at both the key site and also the testers that we send out to every one of our schools. Also want to, you know, point out that we are continuing testing at the key site every day, Monday through Friday, for all of our staff and our students from one to five. And anybody can partake in that and just make an appointment on our website. There hasn't really been any more updates as far as COVID from the state or the county, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. All right, item B, pursuant to Education Code Section 17620 and the Government Code Section 65995, it is recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on the approval of School Developer Fee Justification Study for residential and commercial industrial development dated April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. As prepared by the Cooperative Strategies, the study concludes that the district is fully justified in levying the maximum fees and the amounts established by the State Allocation Board on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two for the new residential and commercial and industrial as follows. Residential, okay, I, I think it's just like a, just declaring a hearing, right? All right, so do I, I need, I think I need to read off the rest, rest of it, right? Yeah, residential, two thousand, two thousand four hundred, or is that thousand? Is that a comma or? Yeah, two thousand four hundred. Retail, point three four nine. Office, point three nine zero. Research and development, point three nine zero. Industrial warehouse manufacturing, port three nine zero. Hospital, point three nine zero. Hotel motel, zero point one seven seven. Self-storage, zero point zero one zero. I believe there are no comments on this hearing. Anybody here to speak on this hearing? At this point, I will go ahead and close the hearing. Item C, it is recommend the Board of Education approve the residential and commercial industrial development school fee justification study and adopt the resolution number two zero two two dash two one five one entitled Resolution of the Board of Education of the Anaheim Elementary School District approving an increase in statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial construction pursuant to Education Code Section 17620 and Government Code Section 65995, subject to the modification of any board member to incorporate any prepared or modified written responses to the public comments received by the district, if any. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. And just so everyone's aware, these presentations that we heard earlier will be available on the district website under the tab Board of Education by tomorrow. All right, and let's move on to item A, consent calendar. Items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items that you would like to pull, board members?
Yes, several.
Sure.
Sorry, I will be pulling those, these items, not for my discussion, but because I will abstain as I serve on these boards and commissions. So I will be pulling, I'd like to pull, please, item eight A seven. Item eight B three. Item eight E six. Item eight E twenty-three and twenty-four. So I'm sorry, you're gonna have to pull all those separately.
It's okay. Okay, any other items we'd like to pull? All right, do I have a motion to ratify the remaining consent calendar minus items eight, eight A seven, eight B three, eight E six, eight E twenty-three and eight E twenty-four?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the remaining consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the consent calendar minus those items is, is moved. Okay, so let's go ahead and look at item eight A seven. Okay, so let me read that one out.
Point of order, Mr. President, is it possible just to bundle them as one?
I, I don't see why not. You wanna make a motion for that? Do they all regard the same YMCA? Okay. Which ones are the YMCA?
But are all of them, basically you're abstaining from them because of a same reason?
Let's just do two then. Do you want a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we vote in the most efficient way possible. We could bundle those four together. And then for YMCA, because I'll also be abstaining on those four and I'll be supporting the children and families commission.
Sure, I'll second that. Any discussion on that? Yeah, I got it, I got it. I'll bundle those in one and the other one separate. Sure. You good with that? Okay, all in favor of bundling them and make it more efficient, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, let's go ahead and move forward with that. So with the items eight A seven, eight E six, eight, oh, eight B, E or E? E or B? Uh huh. Yeah, okay. Items eight A seven, eight E six, eight E twenty-three and eight E twenty-four. All regard the YMCA. Are, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second to discuss? I'll second it. Okay, all right, so go ahead and discuss. I think you already said it, but we're just doing official, we'll leave to the motion. And then Mark, you, you're on. Okay, all right, so, all right, all in favor of approving these items? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then abstentions, we have two, right? So a motion carries three to two for items eight A seven, eight E six, eight E twenty-three and eight E twenty-four. Are you good with that? Yessenya, you good? Okay, all right, so let's look at item eight B three. I'll actually go into that one. All right, it is recommended the Board of Education approve amendment number one to an agreement between the district and the Children and Families Commission of Orange County, one five zero five East Seventeenth Street, Suite twenty-two three zero.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Are you discussing on the item?
I'm a commissioner for the first five children's commissions, so I will abstain.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And abstentions, we have one. So a motion carries four to one. Thank you. All right, that concludes the consent calendar. Oh, four one, did I say something different? Oh, sorry, four one, thank you. All right, so let's move on to the action calendar, superintendent's office. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number two zero two one two two slash four nine, calling for a biennial trustee election on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two for the three board members whose terms expire December ninth, twenty twenty-two and order a consolidation, consolidated election in accordance with the Education Code Section five three four zero.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Item two, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number two zero two one two two slash five five, supporting advocacy in support of anti-racist pedagogy and activities. AESD supports the protection of employees, whether explicitly or implicitly, that, that are working towards providing a safe space for one another and for students through actions and lessons that encompass and teach anti-racist constructs and are culturally responsive to our community. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, at the federal level, at the state level, at local board levels, municipalities are voting, you know, to eliminate histories, her stories, critical race theory, theoretical frameworks that have been adopted from the university level. I am definitely gonna support this primarily because we have led in many resolutions, including ethnic studies at the elementary level, a culturally responsive pedagogy that our teachers are currently being trained in. So I'm very proud of this piece of, this resolution. I just wanted to share that before I vote.
Sure, likewise, and I'm, I'm just, I just wanna encourage our educators and our staff out there to have the courage to speak out when, with regards to anti-racism and the lessons we could teach each other and our children regarding diversity and inclusivity and equity in our spaces, right? So this is really important, near to, and dear to my heart because I'm also an educator and I feel like if I, if I knew that I felt safe in providing lessons that gave our students an anti-racist lens, then I would be, I would just, it would be a weight off my shoulder, right? So this is what I'm hoping to provide our staff, is a weight off their shoulder to feel good and comfortable about doing what's right for our kids and doing right by our community. So, uh, thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five oh. Thank you so much. All right, item B, educational services. Item one, it is recommended the Board of Education take action on the material revisions of the Palm Lane charter school petition and adopt resolution number two zero two one dash two two slash five zero. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. A second. All right, discussion? We'll start over there if you have any things. No? Paulo?
All right, I have a lot to share.
Okay, go for it.
One of the speakers was right. I had just gone onto the school board when all of the issues around Palm Lane were going on. That was one of the most difficult things that I had to decide on. I lived in Anaheim for over. Over thirty years now, and I love trustee area three. A lot of my friends, a lot of their kids went to Palm Lane. A lot of my former students, I was also a teacher for fifteen years at Lohera High School right across the street. A lot of my students went to Palm Lane, a lot of their brothers and sisters also went to Palm Lane. My best friend went to Palm Lane, my best friend Lionel. Jackie Philbeck, our trustee, went to Palm Lane. We know this community well. And the moment that I went on the board. I visited lots. And what I learned was that the district did a lot. In fact. Lots of teachers throughout the district volunteered to come. To Palm Lane Elementary School. Became a family. They had programs. They had, one of the things I remember visiting was the center where parents could come and, you know, they were taught about. You know, like how to. Just very basic things, and a lot of it was very healing, things that I wished that I had when I came as an immigrant from the Philippines to Anaheim. You know, a lot of our families don't know how to navigate the education system and those parents did. And can I tell you the PBL, the Project Base Learning that was going on in that school, it was amazing. There was learning going on in there. There was gym best circles, there was music, there was DLI. The principal was engaged, was responsive to the needs of the community, utilize a culturally relevant pedagogy. Things that I researched during my doctorate program. And I was fascinated and I, and I said, you know what, I am gonna go ahead and continue and fight. For Palm Lane to become one of our neighborhood public schools. All right, a lot of the board members at the time did as well. And then the state Supreme Court voted against us. And. We can't argue against the state, especially at this, you know, at the court level. So we gave. Not Vista, New Charter, the opportunity to, to become a charter. And even though I voted to continue the fight. I prayed every day. That things would grow great at Palm Lane. And month after month and year after year. And I paid attention to everything. A lot of us did. Didn't pass state requirements like seabeds, consistent leadership overturning, I mean, even your principal said that she would stay up until April and she didn't. Consistent records that were just mismanaged, and I know it's not your fault, right? Educators, and I'm so proud that you were there with them during this pandemic. It's been difficult for everybody. Right? What we lack is in leadership. Right? So fast forward now, and again, I do hope for the best. For Palm Lane, right? I do, I wish the best for all students regardless of the type, even regardless of the beliefs that I, and it's public. People know that I am not for charter schools. I don't believe in the privatization of public funds. May it be schools, may it be freeways, may it be any public resource. That's just what I believe in. Now. Going particularly to this decision. And first of all, Dr. Wilson, thank you so much. Thank you for coming out, right? Thank you for coming out, providing some resources, giving the presentations, and for all of your work. I truly appreciate it. However, the way in which I was trained, the way in which I was to understand education is looking at the whole child. Right? You cannot educate children without understanding the whole child. And to understand the whole child, you have to understand the socioeconomic disadvantages those students have, if they are emergent bilinguals, the population of that. School, that community, the history of that community. And Dr. Wilson, it was not a trick question in asking you, what have you learned from the community? You also said that you wanna use a culturally responsive, community responsive curriculum. And I was like, wow, yes. And then when I asked you that question, it was a simple question. All you could have done is tell me some of the things about your teachers, tell me some things about your parents. It could be, tell me that Beatles has the best pozole in the community. That Mrs. Argüeta sells papusas on the weekends just to get by in Little TJ, which is known as Jeffrey Street, which historically has been like one of the gangs in the community, right? That the fades right next to Beatles is the dopest fades in all of Anaheim, right? And that's cool that you wanna have, what is it? I wrote it down. Instead of coffee with the principal, you wanted to have tamales with the principal, right? But is that the demographic population within Mexico? Is that what they want? Right? We use a lot of these key words that are in the curriculum and in textbooks and what's the key in education. But my question comes from a very authentic lens and I asked you twice, right? You couldn't give me any answer. It would appease me. And I'm sorry, board members. I was prepared to vote yes on this, but I just can't. I can't. I'm sorry, I do not trust leadership, but I respect, and I hope that even if it passes, that you do well. I do. I hope I could take you to get some Filipino food down the street at Capitbahay and we could learn together and work together, but I just cannot at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGallas. Any other comments or questions? I mean, comments?
Yes, so thank you, and thank you for the presentation this evening. You know. Myself and trustee Philbeck are the longest-serving board members, I believe, right, on here. And so when we basically were just getting on the board, that's when the petitions all took place, et cetera. And to just kind of mimic what Dr. McGallas said, you know, we did have some great things going on afterwards, you know. After the petitions had been served and things were changing and things were adapting, et cetera. And I was very proud. I was very proud, and I am still proud of the teachers who volunteered to go over there and work there. I'm proud of our principal that we had there, who was fantastic, and she did a really great job and lots of things were taking place and we had the resources, et cetera. And then, you know, we moved and basically. There's been a lot of different types of agencies that have come in, charter schools that have basically gone through. And we've watched the teachers, and that's one thing I do admire quite a bit, is the teachers that have basically stuck it through. You could see them today with their passion. And I just, you know, think to myself like, gosh, what talent, you know, and how awesome could they be if they actually have all the resources that they need to really provide awesome instruction for the students, you know? But the one consistent thing that I've seen over and over again has just been inconsistency, you know? You know, in the beginning, they had to borrow money from people to make ends meet. They basically had to go through and when I asked, how many of you have been observed before, you know, I didn't see any of them have been observed. You know, but when it's all said and done, the group that basically suffers the most, which is really what I find to be the most problematic, is the students that we serve. And, you know, I'm not a guy that's basically pro charter or anything like that. However, you know, I think the law is the law and I read into the law and I think that basically regardless of how we vote. We gotta follow the law. And as a result, even though I'm not, you know, gonna be applying to this or anything like that to work. I do think that your program and what you will be able to provide the students is definitely gonna be way better than what these poor kids have had to endure these last few years, which is just horrible. So I'm excited for the students under Vista. I'm excited for the teachers under Vista. And I'm just really, really hoping that this pans out. So I will be voting yes.
I'm gonna be very direct with my comments because as Ryan said, I'm sorry, Mr. Rilis. We've been on this since day one, literally the day that I was sworn in was the date, the first day that the petition was delivered to this office. And we were thrown into this and we have watched it for years now. And I have to say, first of all, I'm not against good charter schools. We have another one in the district. We don't have anywhere near the issues that we have had with Palm Lane. And as Dr. McGallas said, yes, I don't mind dating myself. There is history here. I grew up there. Graduated from Lohera High School, so eighteen, nineteen, twenty years, went to Palm Lane probably around nineteen sixty-two through sixth grade. I still have a lot of friends in the community. I've lived in Anaheim for sixty-two years. I know Anaheim. I know that area of Anaheim. It's, doesn't get me any prizes, I'm just saying that, you know. I'm frustrated with what has happened over the years, but I'm not frustrated with the teachers. I want you to know. You are gems. You are valued. You are gold. I mean, I don't know how else to say it. Nicole, I'm sorry, I don't have your last name, but your enthusiasm, I appreciated both public speakers, but your enthusiasm was, was really, it was great. So. I do have a history with Palm Lane and I'm frustrated because over the years I have watched Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid be put on this situation. And I'm gonna repeat what, because it was all public session, public comments. We had meetings. This was all public, you know, information. Administrative problems, turnovers, principal problems, not filing the paperwork on time, even taking out loans to pay the teachers. It has been maddening and frustrating to watch this for years, especially knowing that students that we consider precious are being affected by this. And my dilemma with this is, and I respect Dr. McGallas's. Opinions, it's his district. I guess where my. Hesitation is. Is I honestly do not know or feel that it's certain that this is the fix. I'm being very honest with you. I kind of don't think it is. And, but you're not, I'm in a position that it's gotta be better because what's happening is really bad. And it cannot go on, and I'm not left with much choice, am I? So I. I did not want to vote. This through. So Dr. Wilson and Mr. Felch and Ms. Prado, I appreciate you being here and being on the hot seat, and I know that we've put you there, but you know what? We, I think we have a right to do that because of what we have gone through with this school and this community. So I'm going to make a very. Blunt statement. In the hopes that. This is going in the right direction and it is better. So I am voting to approve the material revision. But I want the record to reflect that I remain deeply concerned about the operational and instructional issues at Palm Lane. And I am not in any way fully convinced that the proposed changes are directly addressing the underlying issues. Simply stated, the changes may not make things better at the school. Particularly since I don't have a strong confidence on Vista's track record of providing exemplary education. For its students at other sites. So to Dr. Wilson and Mr. Felch and Ms. Prado. Please know that the district will closely monitor and oversee the school. And if the same issues that currently exist at the school remain under your new leadership. I will be the first one to push the district to take the necessary and appropriate steps to ensure, whatever we have to do, that the school is in compliance with the charter. And the representations that you have made to this board, which some of them I find. A little. You know, I don't have a lot of confidence in them. I don't have a lot of confidence in some of your answers. So I will wish you well and as always, as our record has proven, we have. Helped put those Band-Aids on. We have stayed with this situation for many years and we have never ever. We want the students to have, we never wanted a student to not have an exemplary education, and that holds for everybody on this board. So here we go. I'm watching, they're watching. You know. I don't want it to sound too negative, but I do want it to sound very direct and because it was, it was difficult for me to come to this decision, but again, what choice do I have because it's just got to get better? And I'm not real happy with not knowing who, you know, who you're gonna choose to be on the board with you from the existing board members because, you know, they might be community oriented, they might not. So, you know, there's nothing I can really do about that, but that answer didn't really set well with me. So that is it for me and I will be voting to approve it. But please, I hope you heard my statement and understand where I'm coming from. And I, you know, we will be definitely. Watching because something's gotta get better here. It has to. And, you know, I would just advise if any of the Palm Lane parents are listening, speak up. Speak up if it is not going well. If you have issues, if, speak up. So thank you for the opportunity to address you and I appreciate the presentation and you being here tonight.
Sure, I just wanna state, I read the motion wrong or the statement wrong earlier, so it should, I should have stated, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the material revision of Palm Lane Charter. School petition and adopt resolution number two zero two one dash two two five zero. I had said, take action, I should say approve, just to make that clarification. All right, any other comments or statements regarding the issue? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote and let's do a roll call vote this time, okay? All right, starting with Board Member Lopez.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Motion carries three to two. All right, so we're on item seven, SOPA, there are no items. Item D, Human Resources. Item one is recommend the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant number, numbers zero one, zero five one one two zero two two dash zero one, zero five one one two zero two two dash zero two. And zero five one one two zero two two dash zero three to the position of vice principals effective date to be determined and site to be determined.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion carries five oh. Give it to Dina.
Thank you. Congratulations to Tamela Crowe. Tamela began her twenty-two years of service with A E S D when she was hired as a teacher at Jefferson Two Elementary School. She is currently a teacher on special assignment professional development at Olive Street School. Congratulations, Tamela. Congratulations to Grace Cho. Grace currently serves the Placentia or Belinda School District as an instructional coach and as a classroom teacher before that. She began her career in education as a teacher in New York in two thousand and one. Welcome to A E S D, Grace. And finally, congratulations to Dr. Ashley Thompson. Ashley joins A E S D from her current position as a classroom teacher in Santa Monica. Prior to that, Ashley served the Houston, Texas area in positions such as assistant principal, adjunct professor, instructional coach, and teacher. Please help us welcome Ashley to A E S D. Vice principal site assignments for the twenty-two twenty-two. for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be announced next week through an email to all district staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. All right, let's move on to item two. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which will be submitted to the California State Department of Education. An annual procedure, an annual procedure requires school districts throughout the state to declare a potential need to hire teachers on an emergency permit or credential waiver. This is a proactive measure in an event such need becomes necessary.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions, okay, motion carries five zero. Item E, administrative services. It is recommended the Board of Education approve resolution number two zero two one dash two two slash five four authorizing the, uh, issuance of Anaheim Elementary School District, uh, Orange, California, general obligation bonds, election of two thousand and ten, series two thousand and twenty-two and actions related, uh, thereto.
So moved, second.
Uh, motion and second, any, uh, discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions, okay, motion carries five zero. Let's move on to item ten, board discussion. Let's begin with trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much, President Alvarez. Uh, slightly, uh, pared down list of events, uh, to report, uh, this week. So I think, uh, board clerk Philbeck, you might beat me this time. Uh, beginning on Tuesday, May third, uh, most of them are, uh, just staff meet and greets. I've been trying to complete my tour of, um, meeting with a lot of our wonderful, amazing staff. Uh, and it began last Tuesday, May third, uh, continuing that tour with Betsy Ross Elementary, uh, about, uh, almost an hour, I think it was for this meeting. It was a virtual meeting, um, but it was a really good turnout. A lot of great discussion that occurred, uh, at that time. Uh, the next day, Wednesday, May fourth, I was able to attend a portion of our LCAP meeting. I know it was held in this very room. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it in person and, um, I was also conducting some office hours with, uh, some of my students and so I wasn't able to, um, attend the entirety of it. But from all appearances, uh, it seemed like it was a very productive, uh, time. Uh, Saturday, May seventh, I had the opportunity to attend the PTA reflections. I believe a couple of other board members may have also attended at the Orange County Department of Education. Uh, it was a great opportunity and I posted, uh, several, uh, photos that I was able to get, uh, online of our wonderful, uh, art talent that we have here in the district. Um, and I want to just thank all of our staff for really inspiring our students and facilitating the ability for them to express themselves artistically, whether it was with paintings or poem, uh, film production. I was really impressed with a lot of the art that was down there. Um, and, uh, it was great to be back there in person and be able to kind of walk through the galleries, uh, the different rooms that they had, uh, that were set up. And, um, I got in there as early as I could to kind of beat the rush and, uh, I was really impressed with, uh, the number of entries that we had that were, um, around, uh, on the walls and on the tables. Uh, Monday, May ninth, I was able to meet with three additional school staff, um, or staffs, uh, at Stoddard, Price and Sunkist. So it was kind of a busy day, uh, bookending my day at seven AM with Stoddard and then I had, uh, afternoon meetings with Price and Sunkist. So I just want to thank all of the staff who, you know, it's the time of year where it's kind of, we're, we're closing out the school year and, uh, we've all had a lot of meetings. And in the past year and a half, we've had a lot of virtual meetings. So I know that there's, there's, you know, tight, uh, amount of time to have another meeting on your schedule. So I just want to thank the staff and also Chantal Moreno for helping to coordinate that because she's done a monumental Herculean, uh, job and effort in coordinating all of those. Um, so thank you, Dr. Downing, for lending her to me to be able to coordinate all of those, uh, over the past several months. And, uh, all the principals as well, uh, for helping to coordinate all of those. And, um, and then I had, uh, my last one for this cycle at least was, uh, this afternoon with Westmont. I was able to meet with, a really good turnout there as well. I think there was, uh, over twenty, between twenty twenty-five, uh, staff members who were able to attend. And again, great conversations, great solutions and suggestions for just improving our already amazing district that we could make it even more amazing. So, uh, I, I really am encouraged by the great ideas that a lot of our staff have, so, which I'll be sharing with us, Dr. Downing. So with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you, President Alvarez.
Thank you, board member Lopez, Dr. McGallas.
Sorry, board president, I have nothing more to report for this, uh, since the last board meeting, but I am on summer break now officially from Cal C L.A. and I promised to visit some more, uh, sites before our school year ends. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McGallas, I, board member Rillis.
Um, thank you, uh, President Alvarez. Uh, first off, I just want to take this time to apologize for, um, not showing up at our last board meeting. Um, I'm usually not like that. Uh, I did have a little emergency come up, um, so I do apologize for that. I had every intention of coming. Um, but, um, with that said, um, let me move on to my board report. Um, first off, those of you that know me well, and I believe I even shared about it, uh, here on the diets, uh, my dog had puppies. And why does it matter? It matters because of the fact that four of the puppies have found their forever home with families from Benito Juarez. So I now have an extended family with the Benito Juarez Beaver family. So, uh, I'm excited about that. Um, with that said, uh, I also want to just give a shout out to all of our amazing teachers here. Uh, last week was teacher appreciation and this year has been tough. Uh, it has been a really, really tough year for everyone. Um, and I just want to say, uh, how much all of us, uh, appreciate you, um, and, uh, value everything that you do for our students here in AESD. With that said, uh, it was teacher appreciation night the other day at Angel Stadium, so that was fun. Um, I headed out there with some friends, um, and I saw, uh, a bunch of teachers from Stoddard there who were there because their kids were going to be performing. And we ran into just tons of families, uh, from the Anaheim Elementary School District there with their families, um, teachers with their families. It, it was just a great evening and, um, it was well-deserved recognition. It was just one of those Fridays, end of the week and we're just all excited to go out and it was awesome. It was a good time. Um, and with that said, uh, Edison, uh, Edison contacted me and I was, I've, I've started, uh, all of you know, i- i- I'm finishing up my first year this year as a teacher, or as a, as an administrator in the Anaheim, uh, Union High School District and it's been great. Um, it's a lot more difficult than I thought. Um, I have a lot of respect, uh, for administrators now, um, now. Um, but no, it is one of these things where it's been an awesome experience and I love it, love it, love it. But with that said, um, I'm super busy and so I haven't been able to really head out a lot to a lot of different school sites, et cetera. So when an opportunity presented itself to me, um, which is, I was contacted by the PTA over at Edison and my friend Rosie's on that PTA and she asked me, hey, can you help me out? We're doing our staff appreciation, celebrating it today. I said, okay, I can help out. I will do what makes me happy and makes me proud. So I went and bought the teacher's portos. Uh, so that was my way of showing thank you and saying thank you to Edison's teachers for being so amazing. Um, and if any of the other PTAs in my schools are watching and you need me to do something, you have two more days, so let me know, okay? And on that note, that concludes my report.
Thank you, board member Rillis, uh, clerk Philbeck.
Thank you. It's late, so I'm going to push through this pretty fast. Um, I went on, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, Saturday, um, to Jefferson and Price to see the Starbucks murals being painted. And, um, it was just great. They were painting them on walls and on the ball containers. And at Jefferson even, they painted a hopscotch, the traditional one, and a Korean one, which was really interesting and that was a lot of fun. Um, and I was, uh, I saw Dr. Song and, uh, Vice Principal Moore over there and they were, it was, it was amazing what the artists were doing. So we appreciate that. And then I ran over to Price because they were doing the same thing. They also had a lot of volunteers, teacher volunteers, um, and basically doing the walls, panda emblems, um, sayings. And I also give a shout out to Principal Ramirez and, and Vice Principal Doherty. They were pitching in right there. There's also was garden beautification on the campus. Um, I believe Ms. Sanchez's garden, had a little garden there by her classroom and they had taken the squares of dirt and just really beautified them. So good job to all of them. Um, the next day, which was a Sunday, was actually the health fair for the YMCA at our new community complex, which we're very, very proud of. And, uh, there was a lot of resources there, a lot of booths from everybody from library and, um, moms, which is a, a early childhood resource. Uh, Disneyland, the police department, there were massages, there. It was just really a great, uh, uh, event and, and very much, um, everybody enjoyed it. There was, there's a lot of giveaways and lots of fun. So I was also, I think one of the most fun things I did, um, I was honored to represent the board at Lincoln Elementary last week, um, while, uh, the Lincoln Lions received the Seal of Biliteracy Award. And that's our third school, I believe, in the district to receive that award. And it was just an honor to be there and I just wanted to thank Kabe and the representatives that showed up to give us this fine award. And also, um, the students and families that worked and the teachers that worked so hard for it, um, and the administrative staff that, and cabinet that showed up to help receive that award. So that was a lot of fun. Um, CSBA delegate meeting, uh, reflections, which I know, uh, will be reported on, Mr. Alvarez will report on. So I'll just say, it's, I go every year, it's a lot of fun. It's astounding, the, especially the artwork, uh, it just kind of blows me away. It's at the Orange County Department of Education and, uh, it's really was a nice spread put on and it's always exciting. I, I'm sorry, I can't, uh, say specifically who won from our district, but I did see, um, Mrs. Alvarez was kind enough to take us around and show us the actual, uh, winners, uh, and their offerings, their, whether it's literature, art or whatever. So it was great. And with that, I will finish and pass it along to Mr. Alvarez. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, clerk Philbeck. Okay, first I want to acknowledge that we have a, uh, visiting board member from Anaheim Union. Uh, we have Admiral Randall Freyholz. Hi, thanks for spending the evening with us. Uh, all right, so I just want to kind of bring to light, uh, the past week or so has been a plethora of celebrations of different school employees, right? So I just want to kind of call some of them out. Today, California officially is celebrating the Day of the Teacher through the state. Uh, we had School Nursing Day as well, or School Nurse Day as well. Uh, yesterday, I believe it was School Crossing Guard Day. And recently, we had School Lunch Hero Day. So I just want to give a shout out to all of our employees out there, putting in the work every day. Um, it's hard, it's hard work. We appreciate you and we want to acknowledge that, that we're here for you and that we appreciate all you do for our families and our community. So, uh, it should be a list of every single job description day, uh, sometimes, but I think we'll get there eventually, but it's just great to acknowledge that we have, we have a wonderful family of employees here that, uh, run our district on a day-to-day basis. Uh, the only thing I have to report is this past Saturday, I did go to the PTA Reflections Gallery at the Orange County Department of Ed. I made kind of a huge mistake, so my wife Jessie was helping to set up and I was charged to bring the children with me later, right? And so being the dad I was, I was like, do you guys just want to stay home today? Because I know they hate going sometimes places with me. And it had completely slipped my mind that my son Reese was a featured artist getting an award. So I kind of took him out of the opportunity to take photos at the gallery with his award, because I just had like a brain fart. I just, I was just like, I'm going to be a cool dad today. They can stay home for an hour and I'll come back and then, nope. So I apologize, Jessie Alvarez and Reese Alvarez, for messing that day up for you and not providing a photo up. So what you will see on my Facebook is a picture of me holding up my son's art in its place, in his place. So, yeah, anyway, that's what happened on Saturday. And that was funny. So, yeah, so that's all, that's all for my report today. And just, again, thank you to everyone who does all the, uh, fantastic work for us here in our district. And that moves us on to, um, future agenda items. Are there any, are there any future agenda items? None? Okay, that means moves us over to adjournment. It's adjourned this meeting at nine thirty-four PM. Thank you.